All right, we'll begin the meeting of the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee for July 15th, 2025. And appreciate everyone that is watching from home, everyone that's watching the video after, and those of you that are present tonight. First thing on the agenda is, what's the first thing on the agenda? Public comment?
Public comment.
Fantastic. First thing on the agenda is public comment, and if there's anyone in the room that would like to give a public comment, you're more than welcome to do that. I'll read a little text and a script if there is. Seeing none, I'll pass on to the online area to see if there's anyone online that might have, need an opportunity to speak. Do we have anyone online?
Sure, we have no virtual attendees at this time.
Okay, fantastic. Well, again, the City Council always appreciates comments from the public via email, or you can stop us on the street when you see us. At the grocery store, we always like to talk to the public about the issues that are on your mind. Next thing on the agenda would be approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Have the minutes been reviewed? All right. I'm going to ask for approval of the minutes then. Any objection?
No objection.
No objection. The minutes are approved then. All right, that takes us to the first item on the agenda, and we're lucky enough to have staff here to talk to us about the utility rates. And thank you for being here. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you. Sergey, are you going to share your screen?
I am. Let me do that right now. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I should be sharing the main PowerPoint. Can you see it right now?
Yes.
Great.
All right. So, good evening, Council. Tonight, we're talking about the utility rate study, and specifically, the rate design analysis portion. This is our fourth touch with you all tonight on the utility rate study. Today, we'll be evaluating the rate design analysis for the city's water, sewer, and stormwater services, and Sergey will explain all that entails in rate design later in the presentation. You've seen this before, but to reiterate, we are evaluating and setting new rates for the city's water, wet utilities for the next five years. Our last rate study was completed five years ago, and we are looking at policy and planning things that, today, that will impact rate structures for the next 10 years. So here are our primary objectives that we set out at the beginning of the project, and the one that we will be focusing on tonight, which is not in any discernible order, is establish a defensible basis for assigning cost shares and providing equity for rate As I mentioned, this is our fourth touch on the rate study. We set the groundwork for the goals of the rate study, evaluated cost of service for each customer class within each utility division, determine general facility charges, and tonight, we'll be looking at the rate design for each customer class. This is our last policy discussion tonight. Our next stop is a summary, where we will lay out all the findings and recommendations we made on this rate study. Because there is no meeting in August, we're going to take a little break, and we'll be back in September to do the final findings and recommendations and a summary of all that we've done so far, and then our goal is to adopt the rate study in October, and that gives us a little bit of time to adjust our code where needed and implement rates in the beginning of 2026. So tonight, we will be recommending two policy items. We'll be looking at shifting the duplex rates to align with single-family residential for both water and sewer utilities, and we'll recommend shifting the minimum sewer charge for non-single-family residential users, including mixed-use, multifamily, commercial, to align with minimum King County treatment charges for RCEs or residential customer equivalents. All right, I'm going to pass it off to Sergey.
Thank you, Matt, and thank you, Council, for taking the time to meet today with us and continue our discussion regarding utility rates, specifically, as Matt mentioned, focusing on rate design. As always, I'd like to quickly go over the presentation overview, just to give you a quick preview of our discussion. We're going to start out with a high-level discussion of the study process. I know we talk about it every time. This is-
Oh, no. And just to make the record, we've had the power go out, and we're trying to fix it right now, if we're still broadcasting. I've had a request for recess until we get things back online, and I think that's a fantastic idea. Thank you, Councilmember Ray. We'll take a recess for 10 minutes and convene back at 6:47. Okay, thank you for your patience as we were sorting out some power issues here. We are back in open session for our meeting, Mobility and Infrastructure Committee, and we were going to hear from our consultant, and go ahead, please.
All right, well, thank you, and I'll dive right in. So where I believe we left off was a quick overview of the presentation. We're going to be talking about the rate setting process itself, just remind ourselves what goes into the overall process, and we'll do a quick refresher of the prior meetings, showing you the results that were brought back to the previous committee presentations, focusing on the revenue requirement, cost of service, and the general sort of charges. We'll spend just a little bit of time there, and our main focus will be on the rate design discussion, which will conclude that last step of the overall rate setting process. As always, feel free to ask questions as we go along. Now, the typical comprehensive studies such as this one consists of three key analytical steps. The first step, we refer to as revenue requirement, which looks at the overall needs of each utility, making sure that each utility can be self-sufficient, and support itself on a standalone basis, and can do so today as well as to the future. At this point in time, we're not really focusing where the funds are coming from, we're just making sure that we can meet our needs overall. Once we have established our overall target for each utility, we'll move on to step two, which we call the cost of service, and really, what this analysis tries to accomplish is answering the question if cost differences exist to provide service to different customer classes. So if you think of step one as identifying the size of the pile of costs that we need to meet, step two slices the pile into pieces to see how big this slice needs to be for each class of service. And lastly, rate design, step three, the focus of today, is the development of the actual fixed and variable charges that are paid for by our customers directly. So the first two steps basically identify the dollar targets that we need to collect, and the last step establishes the actual unit costs and fees that are assessed to our customers. Now, a quick background, the last comprehensive study completed for the city was in 2020. Based on that study, a four-year implementation plan was developed that took out rates through 2025, which were adopted. The plan also forecasted a need for rate adjustments beyond that time period, but the city wanted to review and refresh the analysis before any additional rates were incorporated in 2026 and beyond, and that's when the study started to update these charges in 2024. Since that time, we've been working with your staff to update the analysis and started the communication of the results and feedback process with the council, first, the council committee of the whole, on March 10th, presenting that first step revenue requirement findings, and receiving feedback from the entire committee, then again, in May 14th, with the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee, where we brought back the feedback, adjusted results of the revenue requirement, and focused our attention on the cost of service, and then last time we met was in June 17th, again, with the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee, where we brought back the cost of service adjustment, as well as focused our discussion on general facility charges. So a quick refresher of each of the key steps of the analysis. When we met in March, we received very good guidance from the council that the overall increases that we bring back should be below about 6% for at least the local or the city portion of the charges, the charges that the city has control over. This does not include the King County pass-through charges for treatment, and that we should try to limit the borrowing if we can. So what we brought back for that first step is a scenario that looked at an average impact for the city's share of cost to a typical residential customer of about 4.9%. This scenario also deferred any new borrowing until outside of this five-year window, but did forecast potentially the need for new debt, which would be revisited whenever the next study is performed. When we brought back the cost of service analysis, we did identify that work cost differences between customer classes, and some adjustments were warranted. So a big policy discussion that we had with the committee was, what do we do about it? One option was to continue monitoring the results and revisit the analysis again during the next study. Second option was to make the adjustments all at once, and the third option was to make gradual adjustments towards cost of service. Based on the discussion and feedback at that meeting, the committee wanted to make gradual kind of steps to get to cost of service for both water and sewer utilities. So we brought back the actual phase-ins aligned with moving towards cost of service over a period of time, which are summarized on this slide 13. And really, what we're looking at here, I know there's quite a bit of numbers here, but we're looking at summary results by class of service for the water utility in the upper table and the sewer utility in the lower table. The big picture here is, how does each individual class compare to the total row? For the water utility, we were looking at 4.34% annual adjustments. Some classes were slightly below 4.34%, which indicated that they were paying more than their allocated share of costs, and they needed to be reduced slightly or increased less than average, and some classes are increasing more than average slightly, which indicate that these customer classes were not quite paying their allocated share, and they needed to go up. Similar trends can be found for the sewer utility, and again, this was just in line with the direction that was provided by the committee during prior meetings. Next, we applied the cost of service adjustments to the residential class, and taking into account the cost of service adjustments, we were still well below the 6% kind of threshold that the committee of the whole provided to us in terms of guidance going back to the March meeting. Next, we deviated slightly and focused on slightly different fees, which were general facility charges, which are one-time fees imposed on new development or certain upsizing redevelopment as a condition of service. So unlike your ongoing fees, general facility charges are only assessed once, and they're only applicable to new customers or customers that upsize their capacity to their system, such as upgrading meter size from a smaller meter to a larger meter. When we met with the committee to discuss GFCs, the big policy questions centered around, what do we do about the findings? Do we increase our charges up to the entire cost-based level for all utilities? Do we defer any level of adjustments and keep them at current levels? Or do we make gradual adjustments and phase them in over time? Another policy question that we wanted to confirm was adjusting these charges by inflation annually, as has been historic practice by the city. The reason we typically adjust these type of charges annually is because they're calculated to today's dollars, and to account for inflation that occurs on an annual basis, you're allowed to make those inflationary adjustments. The committee gave us guidance and indicated that the sewer and storm charges can be increased up to the cost-based levels that were calculated, so those can be found in the upper portion of the table to the right, which shows the sewer and storm increases per unit of capacity. For the water utility, the committee indicated that a 10-year phase-in was preferred, so we will be showing you that in the next slide or two. And then lastly, the committee confirmed that the practice of adjusting charges by inflation should still continue into the future. So in order for us to phase in the water charges, we created a 10-year forecast, since the charges were split between the portable share of charges and the fire protection share of charges, and the majority of the increase was coming from the fire component of the charges, our proposal was to set the portable component of the new charges at the cost-based levels, and then phase in the fire portion, starting at about halfway point or 55%, gradually by 5% up to 100% mark over the 10-year period. Now, the information we're going to show you in the next slide is presented in today's dollars. Any inflation, once it actually occurs, will be added on top of the phase-in that we're going to show you. So in this slide, we're breaking down the charges into three sections. The first portion of the table summarizes the single-family and duplex connection charges under bi-meter size. We're showing you the existing and a gradual phase-in up to the cost-based levels by 2035. Similarly, multifamily and non-residential accounts, with any new accounts who pay at the middle portion of the table, again, gradually phasing in up to that maximo at calculated level. And lastly, the combined irrigation, portable and right-of-way irrigation, and private irrigation, any new connections would be tied to the table down below. All right, well, that's the background. Now we'll switch gears, and we'll focus on rate design this time around. So again, what is rate design? At the very basic level, it's just the development of fixed and variable charges that collect the appropriate dollars identified in those first two steps. After that, we want to make sure that we can set our rates to align with cost optimization principles, but also, we need to make sure that we can meet the goals and policy objectives of the utility and the community. Those could be related to conservation, low-income assistance, revenue stability, and so on. One important item that's always critical to understand when working on rate design and considering alternative rates is that there's not a one-size-fits-all solution. The key item to consider is that what are the goals that we're trying to accomplish as a community, as a utility, and then what rate structure aligns the best with those goals and objectives. So as an example, if our goal is to be focused on making sure that our rates generate sufficient and stable revenues on an annual basis to cover our obligations, we may focus on a structure that emphasizes fixed charges more so than variable charges. If we're trying to emphasize conservation-type structures and objectives, we may focus on the volume portion of the charges, as well as looking at conservation rates like tier grades. Lastly, if we want to make sure that our rates are understandable and are easy to implement, we also need to make sure we don't create a very comprehensive and complicated structure that everybody can understand. So now, to start the discussion with the existing rates and with the water utility. So what we're doing on this slide is we're providing a summary of your current rates, summarized into three tables. The upper-left table provides you the bimonthly charges by major class of service. You can see that these charges vary by meter size. They are about $43.76 for single-family customers, and going down the list, are about $29.38 for irrigation. There are differences between classes. As an example, irrigation customers do not benefit from fire protection, so typically, their fixed charges would be slightly lower than all other fixed charges. So again, there's the trending there. The second table, right below the fixed charges, is related to the volume portion of the charges for the residential class, specifically, the single-family and the duplex classes of service. Currently, these classes have a four- and a five-block rate structure. The blocks are slightly different by category. Single-family class, block one is 0 to 4, 5 to 14 CCF, 15 to 30, 3150, and anything over 50, while the duplex only has four classes with an upper threshold is over 40 CCF. The volume charges are fairly similar. There's a slight difference in block one, and there's also a slight difference in the upper tier, really emphasizing conservation on the single-family residential charge. The non-residential rates also have a tier structure. There's a block that does vary by size, so the block does escalate with the size of the meter, and it is also a conservation incentive-type structure, where the second block is higher for all classes except the large user, where the large user pays the same rate for all usage, doesn't matter if it's tier one or tier two, it's just simply a uniform rate. Now, because we are trying to incorporate overall adjustments through the revenue requirement, we are trying to incorporate cost of service adjustments, we did not want to make too many differences to changes and modifications to our current rate structures to avoid compounding impacts to our customers. So our main goal with our rate structures this time around is to apply the class-specific cost of service increases from the cost of service phase-in, which you saw a couple of slides ago. That's the overall revenue collection target that we have by class. And the second goal that we're trying to accomplish is that, when we looked at the design basis from the most recent water system plan, we saw that the duplexes and the single-family sizing criteria for fire protection and usage patterns are fairly similar, so in order to consolidate and simplify the rate schedule, we are proposing to align them and move them into one rate schedule. So that is kind of the biggest change that we're proposing this time around for the water utility. Now, what does that mean? This slide provides you a summary of the proposed and existing water rates for the single-family residential class and the duplex class. If you look at the existing upper portion of the table, this shows you, again, the existing fixed charges. You'll see that duplex charges are slightly higher for the same meter sizes as single-family. What we're proposing to do is to align them and make them identical, starting in 2026. So right away, they're going to merge into one rate going forward, which means that there's going to be a slight reduction for the fixed charge. On the volume charge, down below, we're proposing to consolidate the tiers or blocks into the single-family blocks. So now, we'll have, all customers will have five blocks, instead of some having four, some having five, everybody will have the same five blocks, and they're going to be aligned, starting right away in 2026. Again, moving to a big change in 2026, and then any future changes are simply applied across the board or proportionally, so there's not going to be any significant modifications after that first change. Now, whenever we do such a big restructure, as moving a class from a four-tier or block structure to a five-block structure, tweaking their block fixed charges by reducing them and increasing the volume rates, there's going to be slight different impacts by different type of customers. So on this slide, we wanted to provide you with an example of distribution of bills and potential range of impacts that you may see for some of the duplex customers. We also have an additional actual impact slide on the next slide that will provide you a little bit more granularity in terms of what kind of impacts you will see for your customers. Now, as background, there's approximately 87 total duplex accounts, so there's not a lot of these customers that are going to be impacted by this change. Predominantly, majority of your customers on the system are single-family residential. In general, when we're looking at the usage patterns for the duplex class, kind of looking at the most recent history, you can see that predominantly, their usage patterns are from 0 to about 16 to 18 CCF, or 1,800 cubic feet, on a bimonthly basis. We do have some outliers that get up to about as high as 4,600 cubic feet on a bimonthly basis, but majority of our bills land between 0 and 1,800 cubic feet, or 18 CCF. Once we apply the new rate structure, which is-
Sergey, if we could pause for a moment, we do have a question from Councilmember Ray.
Hi, thank you, Councilmember Joe. Sergey, you probably said this, and I just missed it, but on the duplexes, is that a single meter, or is that one meter per side of the duplex?
I believe it's one meter for the duplex for two units.
Okay, great, thanks. That makes sense.
Okay. So in addition to the shaded area, which shows the bill distribution of usage, we're showing a line which summarizes the potential impact to a customer based on their usage level. So if we align this line with the usage on the x-axis, you can see that customers up to 8 CCF will see an actual decrease in their bill. Customers from 8 to about 14 or so CCF will see a very minor adjustment, one or two percentage points, and then anything about 14 CCF, customers will start seeing increases as high as 10%. And then, for the very high usage levels in the 40s, which there are very few of these bills, you will see an increase as high as 30%. So again, anytime you make these type of adjustments, there are usages or customers that will see a reduction, and then there are customers that will see an increase, and because we are trying to incentivize conservation, those folks that use very high level of consumption will see disproportionately higher impact to incentivize reduction of the discretionary usage of water. Now, what does it actually mean for actual usage? So what we also wanted to do is test our actual usage in actual 87 customers from historical pattern. So we took their 2024 data, we applied the actual rates in place in 2024, and the proposed rate structure, then aggregated their annual bills, and to take a look at what kind of impacts that they would have. You can see that on the outlier side, there would be one account that would experience a 16% reduction in their bill. Most likely, this customer has almost no usage levels, because they would see predominantly a reduction in their fixed charge, and that would be the benefit. We also have one account that would see 30% increase, or about 31%, 32% increase. This is, again, one account, and the level of usage, you would have to be in the upper tiers to experience this level of increase. So predominantly, most customers will see an increase, a decrease, anywhere from 7% to 2%, with the majority of the adjustments ranging from negative 2% to positive 5% or 6%, with a couple of outliers, individual outliers, in the 20% range. To give a little bit more context, your average duplex uses about 12 CCF annually, 11 CCF in the wintertime, and 15 CCF in the summertime. So folks who are using in the 40s, in the 30s, are double the summertime peak average, or triple or quadruple the annual average. So that's the single-family and duplex customers. Everybody else, the adjustments were a little bit more straightforward. For the non-residential class of service, which includes apartments, commercial, public authority, and the large user, everybody will stay on the same fixed charge, so the linkage of having the same charge for those subcategories of non-residential would remain. They would have the same charge. It would simply adjust across the board, and then the volume charges would just get us to their cost-of-service-based class-specific adjustments. So there's no restructuring, there's no remodeling the rates, just collecting the overall cost-of-service phase-in class-based adjustments. For the irrigation class, again, very similar concept here. We're trying to consolidate these classes gradually over extended duration of time. Here, we're aligning the differentials between the tiers. In the first year, after that, they're just simply increasing by their specific, either parks and right-of-way irrigation class rate adjustment, or the private irrigation rate adjustment. So minor adjustment to the difference between the tier one and tier two differentials for both classes. After that, just very simple, across-the-board level of adjustments based on the cost of That concludes the water, and we're going to switch gears onto the sewer utility. Any questions for water before I move on? We can always come back as well. On the sewer utility side, here, we wanted to start again with your current rates being in effect right now. There are currently fixed charges and volume charges, and both fixed and volume charges consist of two cost components. The first one is the local share or the city's share of charges. Everybody currently has the same local or city's share customer fixed charge that's assessed on a bimonthly basis of $20.76. There's also a pass-through cost to the single-family residential customers from King County. Again, this is strictly a pass-through cost of $116.56. On the volume side, everybody has the same $2.49 charge per CCF, assessed either on winter average for the single-family class, charge, or actual usage, depending on the class. And then, for the non-residential class, including currently the duplex class, there's a $7.77 charge per CCF assessed to collect the King County treatment share. Now, if you multiply 7.77 times 15, you'll pretty much get $116.56, because, again, that's what King County charges us for one residential customer equivalent, or one residential equivalent unit. So they assess a unit for residential usage purposes of 15 CCF bimonthly. Now, looking at our current rates, especially for non-single-family residential customers, our minimum assumed usage on a bimonthly basis is currently 12.2, so slightly below what King County assesses us for one residential unit. So there's a chance that our customer doesn't quite use 15 CCF bimonthly, they may not fully recover the pass-through charge to King County. So that's one item we're trying to rectify, and we're proposing to recalibrate the minimum volumes assumed in your bimonthly bills to align to the King County minimum assumption of 15 bimonthly. In addition to that change, we're also, just like for the water utility, aligning duplex rates with single-family rates for consistency purposes. Now, what does that mean? So first, taking a look at the local share of charges, strictly the local city's share components. We currently charge everybody 20.76 on the fixed basis. We're going to continue to have the same charge for everybody for the local fixed charge on a bimonthly basis, so simply going up by the overall system average here into the future. The volume charges will collect the class-specific increases that were identified in the phase-in, so about 3.5% or so for the sewer utility going by memory, and closer to 5% for multifamily and non-residential. So you'll now notice that the single-family duplex rates will diverge from the multifamily and non-residential volume rates. They're going to be still very close, but the differential will start to grow over time. This is, again, the simplest adjustment to align with cost-of-service-based levels of revenues to be collected by class. Now, what does that mean? Here, we wanted to provide you the summary of- Here, we wanted to provide you the summary of the fixed charges that are being proposed, the usage charges in the middle, and the bimonthly minimum charges. So here, starting at the top, currently, the single-family rate includes the local charge of the $20 and the $116 for $137 total. And we're just simply proposing to keep passing through the fixed charge from King County and adjusting the fixed charge as we saw in the prior slide. Duplex rate currently has the fixed charge just for the local share and it currently recovers the King County portion through the volume rate. We're proposing to convert them to be just like single-family and recover that fixed charge portion just like single-family through a fixed charge. So now, instead of having a lower fixed charge and a minimum-based King County share, they're going to just transition to be just like single-family and have the combined fixed charge for both local and the King County shares. Multifamily and non-residential will continue to have just a local fixed charge on a bimonthly basis, simply adjusting by the overall adjustments as we talked about in the prior slide. The volume rate for multifamily and non-residential will still continue to be tied to the King County charge divided by 15 units. So that will be at a minimum, that is what they'll be paying, and then anything after that, they'll be paying for any incremental additional usages. So the combined minimum charges is just at a minimum what somebody would pay on a bimonthly basis, includes the local fixed charge and the minimum amounts recalibrated for the fact that King County assesses us for 15 units, and we just want to make sure we at least recover at a minimum what they assess our charges for. That was probably a whole mouthful of information. I do apologize, it was a little confusing.
Sergey, we have another question from Councilmember Ray.
That was a whole mouthful, and I just want to play this back at you. So I think I understand what you're saying. So from a sewer perspective, for a single-family and duplex, we're merging those onto the same scale or same rate scale. And the larger number, the fixed amount, is driven by the King County 15 CCF assumption. But with the multifamily and the non-residential, we're not using that as a fixed part, we're just using, kind of building on an actual utilization for King County, in which case, if they don't do the 15 CCF, we won't recover all of it, and if they do more than the 15 CCF, we'll recover more than.
So you have a minimum use provision. So at a minimum, each customer will have to pay for 15 units. Now, if they use more, they'll pay for more. But because we are putting the King County charge into a volume charge, we want to make sure we at least recover it, so we're adjusting the minimum to 15.
So what's the rationale for putting the King County charge for some class of service into a fixed and some into a variable?
Typically, King County treats each single-family home as one connection, so one connection pays for one fixed charge, even if they use four. In some extreme cases, they'll still be charged one charge. On the non-residential side, you build based on consumption, so a cost recovery mechanism that's tied to consumption is appropriate as well. You can have it as a fixed charge of blocks of 15 units, but this way, you're at least recovering for the base one unit, and then if somebody does use more and contributes more sewage to the King County treatment plant, you're just charging them for that incremental additional usage.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right. And then the last utility that we're going to look at is your stormwater utility. It's a pretty straightforward structure. You're assessed a charge for equivalent service unit. Once the equivalent service unit is the same, no matter what class of service, it's just tied to the previous service area. There's a slightly adjusted reduced charge for undeveloped parcels. So if it's an undeveloped parcel, it's about half of the typical developed parcel, everything else is just tied to a previous service area. Because it's so simplified and straightforward, we're just adjusting it across the board or just by the overall percentage from the revenue requirement for this utility. So it's just a straightforward percentage adjustment. So with that, that brings me to the end of my portion of the presentation, so I'm going to hand it over back to Matt.
So, back to our direction needed. Our two policy questions for tonight are shall the city align the bimonthly rates for duplex and single-family water and sewer bills? And two, shall the city recalibrate the minimum volume assumption for sewer charges to align with King County Treatment Residential Customer Equivalent RCE definitions for non-single-family residential structures? And then, next slide. And our recommendation is to follow those policy statements and also to continue the standard rate structure for stormwater. And then our next steps, our rate study summary findings and recommendation is going to be September 16th to Mobility Infrastructure Committee, and then we will do the rate adoption on October 20th at regular council. Any questions?
Thank you, Matt. We'll open it up for questions from the committee. Deputy Council President DeMichelle.
You know, this is great and a lot of information, and so I just have a general question. There's a lot of talk about how we're creating these rates to incentivize conservation, and I can see how that works in single-family homes and so forth, but so I live in a condo, I never see a water bill, I pay it through, you know, and so what do we do for those customers who, how do we incentivize conservation for those customers? I will say that my HOA is pretty good about sending us reminders every once in a while about, here's a, you know, here's a hack for saving water, or can you remember to do this or that? But really, in terms of financial punishment, if I'm not conserving, I don't have that as a multifamily resident. So any thoughts about what we do to incentivize those folks?
I think that's more communication and ensuring that there is no major leak or major impact on individual apartment complexes. So like I said, or like Sergey presented, they're still in a block structure, so if a apartment complex uses more water, they have to pay more. It's the same conservation, but it is a bit challenging when it gets to the individual unit and how much you pay to recoup that cost. So eventually, it would trickle down to renters or condo owners, but there is that challenge, and that's also a challenge with the ADU conversation that we're having as well.
Great, thanks.
Councilmember Ray, do you have any questions? Matt, in my apartment complex, we have three buildings that have eight units each, and those eight units are charged one water and sewer charge each month. And so my seven neighbors and I kind of need to band together to conserve if we want to lower our bill. And I guess to just add on to Councilmember DeMichelle's question, you know, when we have these smaller groups, what kind of outreach would you suggest we do to kind of get water conservation on the forefront of their mind, especially during these summer months when the consumption rises so much?
That's a good question. Yeah, please.
Director Moon, welcome.
Hello, good evening. I just wanted to put a plug in for Cascade Water Alliance. We're a member of that association, and we participate in all their drought management and conservation efforts. And they are primarily responsible for our programming along those lines and our communication efforts. Of course, we augment those, retweet them, whatever label you want to apply to that, whatever verb. And the city has a very robust sustainability program, and so we have a lot of our own programming as well that underscores the need to be good stewards of our aquifer and not waste this valuable resource. So we're going to continue doing that education effort. I also wanted to share that we have a plan to outreach to those customers that you saw on the far, you know, end, high end of the scale, the couple standard deviations out. We will reach out to them and let them know what they can anticipate and help them get hooked up with some resources so that they might be able to start planning for especially their peak summer water use. So I think there's going to be some direct outreach for some, and then the city does have on an annual basis, very frequent public education that gets sent out and all sorts of media trying to incentivize people to be good stewards of our water.
Great, thank you very much. As part of the Cascade Water Alliance Board, we do hear about the efforts that are made, and we appreciate that. They show up to Salmon Days and they were at our Resource Fair as well with a table, so that partnership certainly is important. While you're up here, I didn't have the benefit of going to our most recent meeting, so perhaps this question has been asked, but I'd like to take the focus back perhaps two levels. We had the bomb cyclone, and to pay for some of the expenses there, we had to dip into some of these funds a little bit. And we were hoping to get reimbursed from the federal government, but they have not allowed us or they have not designated our bomb cyclone as a disaster that qualifies for federal funds. Question number one, is these rates that are being adopted, do they take into the fact that we kind of need to replenish those accounts a little bit along the way, or did we find other offsets that make it not necessary to put that into the fund calculation along the way?
Yep, I understand the question. I think first, I would say in response, that the utility funds were fortunate and did not have the vast majority of the expenses from the bomb cyclone. We did have some expenses, we had some tree removal that we needed to do, we had a sewer facility, for example, that needed some repair, and we've been able to reprioritize projects or push a project out that was perhaps planned to be done this year and will do at some point in the future. So I would say it's not a significant impact at all. It plays out over time, and that will continue to happen as we redo our capital plans every couple of years. So these rates per se aren't meant to recuperate any costs, but you could say that they are paying for some portion of future projects, of course, or reprioritized projects that got bumped out because of the need to do something more immediate to address bomb cyclone damage.
So it sounds like the changes we're making are going to be able to keep those funds healthy as you've analyzed it through this process?
Correct.
All right, that's great. The second question I had was, you indicated that some projects were moved out a little bit, and we've talked about it a little bit in our CIP. And the reassurance that I would like to hear is that sometimes communities are kicking out these projects too far, so they're out of sight, out of mind, but neglecting some of the things that should be done along the way. And when we're setting these rates, do you, as the director, feel that you're accounting for the projects that need to be done in that timeframe and adequately accounts for the capital that will be needed? If you could just expand on that a little bit.
Yes, in one word, I feel that we are. Like I said, things can happen, right? Matt and I, before the meeting, were just talking about a sinkhole that we have on a road in town, and we're going to need to move water line. Things like that happen, but we have annual programs for those kind of rehab projects. And so on an annual basis, we're just looking at which roads have risen to the top and need most immediate attention. We always have a bucket of funds to deal with those rehab and replacement needs. So those are the funds that we kind of move around and adjust from year to year and decide exactly where they need to go. And then we have spot projects. Best example for that would be a water treatment facility. We don't build those every year. And I do think we do a good job of looking at the priorities down the road and trying to make sure that we're building in the resources that we need in order to fulfill those projects.
Ray, do you have-- I anticipated the answer would be yes, so thank you for that. Just one final comment before we open it up to public comment. Just want to compliment Public Works for quickly addressing the water line that was broken south of town and how the department responded with appropriate personnel, appropriate warnings. The communication was really solid from the communications people on staff, and I think there was good coordination between all the different departments to get that done. So I just wanted to pass that compliment on to you and all of your staff for getting that done in a great, you know, timely way. Thank you.
Thank you, I'd be happy to share that praise.
Any other questions before we open it up for public comment? Okay. We have an opportunity for the public to comment on the topic tonight of the utility rate study. If anyone is present in the chamber that would like to comment, I don't see anybody. Do we have anyone online that might be wanting to comment tonight?
Chair, we do have somebody online on their phone, but I don't see a raised hand.
Okay, let's give them a moment. If you do want to comment on tonight's utility rate conversation, please raise your hand on your phone. Any reaction there? And if you are on a phone, typically that's using star three on most systems. Okay, doesn't look like they would like to comment on that, so I'll open up to discussion for this particular topic from my fellow councilmembers. Deputy Counsel, President DeMichelle.
Well, I'll be very quick. There's two questions here, and the answer is yes and yes for me, so that will take care of that. I want to add to the chair's comments because it was my multifamily residence where the water break took place, and I couldn't have said it any better than Councilmember Joe. It was a fantastic response. Everyone was so well organized and we felt listened to, and the communications was fabulous, so thank you for that, too. So other than that, I have nothing else to say about the topic in front of us tonight.
There actually is a third question to continue standard rate structure for stormwater bimonthly rates.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much for weighing in on that.
And yes.
Councilmember Ray.
Thanks. I, this is really weird, but I wish I was going to be here five years from now so we could go through this again. I truly, I don't know why, but I love the rate study setting. I think it is a fantastic insight into how our utilities work and how we fund them. And I got to, you know, shout out to our consultants and Sergey and team for really walking us through this process in a very systematic and understandable generally way. You know, and I think that we got to the point that we want to, which is we've got rates that are increases that are in bounds of what we set as parameters when we started. I think the steps we've taken along the way have reflected the conversations we've had here at this committee meeting, and I think that, you know, simplifying the rates by merging single-family and duplex makes tons of sense to me. And so, and then, you know, recalibrating to align with the residential, the RCEs is, you know, makes sense, and so I'm supportive of all of the recommendations, including the stormwater bimonthly rate. So thanks for taking us on this journey.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. The answer to all three questions would be yes for me. I appreciate the thought that was put into trying to structure the rates in a manner that would encourage conservation, as Deputy President pointed out. I also thought it was interesting that the rate for our irrigation for parks was fairly high, and I think that also says volumes about how we as a city are going to be approaching conservation and the way that we are, you know, paying our way-- you know, paying our way, but also paying at a rate that makes us conscious of the water we're using and, and how and when we wa- are watering, uh, as the climate changes. So I really appreciate that structure being put in there as well, so, um, any other comments? Okay. Hearing nothing else, I want to thank Matt and Director Moon for the presentation and Sergey tonight for your presentation, and, uh, we'll look forward to, uh, the next installment of, of the, uh, rate study in September. But if there's no other business before the committee tonight, we are adjourned. Seven thirty-one.